Takes a minute. So, call to order our Board of County Commissioners meeting for October 6th.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Let's have a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Well, let's go to correspondence and let Dustin work on the invocation for getting the pastor on there. Correspondence today would be, or, excuse me, consent agenda today would be meeting minutes from the 29th of September to October 4th, meeting minutes and tax change orders, negative $35.96. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Do we have any correspondence organizational business? I didn't think so. Anyone signed up for public comment?
We do, yes.
Alrighty. Citizens desiring to speak on items not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. Commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county business and public comments not permitted in regards to personnel matters or legal matters. Items introduced may become agenda items later date. Who do we have?
Norman Woogie.
I've missed you all. I've been under the weather a little bit. As you all know, our system is broken. Upstairs, you're kind of at the bottom, but it's broken. And if I talk to somebody and I say this, they say, "Welcome to Franklin County." What does that mean? It's not only Franklin County, but it's as a whole. And nobody wants to follow the Constitution. One of the commissioners in the past said, "We don't have to follow the Constitution." The guy was not happy that it had spoken. A few years back, the commission was approached by the then-judges that since they collected fines and monies, that they should get part of the money. I don't know what happened, but that's called kickback and leads to corruption. One of the judges stated that he didn't have to go with the evidence and denied my rights to a trial by jury. What kind of a deal is this? Can't they just do the right thing? This commission needs to be careful not to deny any of our rights. One of them is freedom of speech. You can make rules, but there is rules that you guys had to follow. And one of the things that I watch, not only this commission, but other entities, is not putting out bids publicly. They're opening up a frame of turn. That's part of the rules. That keeps everything clean. I intend to watch. In the past, I've been probably a pain in the neck, but we need to treat each other kind of nice. That's what we're supposed to do. And we're sorry that we might get into your comfort zone or take away the convenience. All in the rules of the Constitution, that's the way it's supposed to be. Keep America, America. Thank you.
All right. Doesn't look like we're going to be able to get Kathy on the line. So Sheriff, you be able to step in? All right. Let's have our invocation.
As you know, scripture reminds us that we were told, first of all, to pray for those in authority, so thank you for the opportunity you give me today. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning thankful for these men and women who are willing to serve our community and to answer the call that you have on their lives for that. I pray over them and ask that you would be in all that is said and done here today as they go forth with the business of the county and that the well-being of all would be kept in mind and that we would serve the public that we've sworn to serve, that we would do that in an honorable manner. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. And we better wind down our items of business, first of which is to consider purchasing some culverts for Public Works.
Commissioners, as I share with you every week, we put in a lot of culverts each week. And ordinarily, you know, we'd like to do, we'd like to acquire culverts just a couple of times a year, but this year, we've got a need going into the winter to order some additional pipes because we've placed so many. And as of today, we're out of the 15-inch by 30-foot culverts. We have solicited bids from our usual suppliers. Metal Culverts Inc. has come back with the lowest and best bid for those culverts at Just to give you a little bit of background, and I failed to include the bid sheet, but just to get it on public record, the Metal Culverts was the low bid at $35,322.60. The next bid was Welburn Sales at $37,122, and then J&amp;J Drainage at $39,824.40. So, we've talked a little bit in the past about the price increase from January to May. Well, prices are not any lower. In fact, they're a little bit higher than they were. So, the prices for the 12-by-30, in January, we paid $11.20 per foot. Today, we're paying $21.84 per foot. The 15-by-30s, $14.05 in January, $27.69 today. 18-by-30, $16.80 per foot, today $32.76 per foot. And then finally, the 24-by-30s, we were paying $29.35 per foot. Today, we're paying $61.43 per foot. So, those prices have not come down. In fact, they've increased a little bit since May when we did our last order. I have done some investigation on the HCP pipe. I still need to acquire some more information and talk to a vendor about pricing and some other concerns that I have. But in talking with a couple of other Public Works directors and some folks with LTAP, they're not really recommending, those folks anyway, are not recommending that we utilize that type of pipe, primarily because of the, in their mind, the fire risk is one of the main considerations there. So, I've started the process of reviewing that and being able to come before you with maybe a study session so we can talk in depth about it, but I'm not, I don't have all the information put together yet. So, if we did go that route, we would be, so far, the only county that I'm aware of that utilizes that for crossroad tubes. Now, I think there might be some applications for, you know, strictly residential entrances and those sorts of things where they're not going to be burning pastures and that type. I think certainly we can, we can look into that. But we'll just see how the rest of the information shakes out and we'll present it and have a more thorough discussion at some point on that topic. So, anyway, we are in need of pipe. We've put in, gosh, over 130, another five or six this past week, so it continues to be an active thing. Folks are aware that we are now selling the pipe, and so we've got a number of folks that are purchasing from us. The city of Richmond, working on a street, South Street, they have purchased three pipes from us. In fact, the last 15-by-30 is going out today to work on that South Street project. So, we are working with folks to lessen their burden.
Hey David, have you seen a 100% increase in other commodities like the pipes?
We are seeing increases in parts, you know, repair parts and those sorts of things. Filters, all of those things are more expensive and harder to get. We're going to talk about tires here in a little bit, and some of those are roughly the same price as what we paid for in January, I think it was. And some of them have increased. So, it's kind of a mixed bag on the tires, but I think across the board, we are seeing prices on our, you know, most of the commodities that we purchase. Things are harder to get. Every conversation that we have with vendors is, seems to be the same conversation that, you know, we need to order, but it may be on back order and they can't give us a delivery date. The guys were telling me the other day that they got the last filter. I'm not sure what specific filter it was, but according to the vendors, it was the last filter in like a four-state area of this particular kind, and so we were fortunate to get it. But I think everybody's in the same boat, and it's not, I can assure you that my budget certainly reflects the increase in costs that we're seeing.
Well, we have to have them to continue operating. It definitely wouldn't be the climate you'd want to stock up your shelves in, but that's definitely not what we're doing with 38 pipes at the rate they're going out the door.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. Any other questions? Motion would be to award the culvert bid to Metal Culverts Inc. for 38 various sized pipes in the amount of $35,322.60.
Would make that motion? Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes.
Thank you, David. Second item is also with Public Works. It's to consider approving a proposal in the amount of $280,734 from Bartlett &amp; West for survey, pavement review, and pre-design report for the Old 50 Highway project.
So Commissioners, we have been talking about this project for several months now. We went through a proposal or qualification process with, I think there were five firms that were involved in that. Bartlett &amp; West was selected to move forward, and since that time, since that selection, we have been discussing scope of services and timing and those sorts of things, trying to nail down just exactly what we need at this point in time. Old 50 is, I think that's a good description. It's an old highway. And so, we have a 16-mile route from Eisenhower to the county line. That road was built in several segments, starting, I think, in the 40s and 50s and in that era. And then since that time, there's been, you know, some minor repairs. There's been overlays. There's been chip seal and those sorts of things. But we've got old concrete underneath the road. And so that, in my mind, was a big concern. If we launched into a design at this point, a full design for some segment of that road, and if we did not do, you know, some pavement analysis to determine the condition of that 50-foot concrete road that we're potentially going to use as our base material, we could be in for a, some big problems during construction. And so, this proposal is in an effort to answer as many questions as we possibly can prior to launching into full design and ultimately, construction. And so, this proposal represents a gathering survey information using mobile IDAR along the entire route. And then we will go back on the segment from Eisenhower to Homewood or Idaho, and we will collect all the utility information and those sorts of things. So, we will have essentially a full survey along that route. And then the pavement analysis comes where we are going to use ground penetrating radar and a video log. So, the company that will provide that as a sub-consonant to Bartlett &amp; West is Braun Intertech. They're a company that Bartlett &amp; West has worked with extensively, and so they will mount their ground penetrating radar on the front of their vehicle, and they will drive the entire route. That will give them an idea of what the pavement thickness is along the entire route, and they'll combine that with the video so they will be able to do the pavement analysis along the entire route. That will enable us to do targeted borings along the route. We'll do 17, 18 of those, you know, at least one per mile, maybe more. And they will core out those locations, and then they will take that and they will test that material at their lab. And then they will recommend, they'll provide recommendations to us on how we need to move forward with that. So, we'll know if we've got pavement that is not going to be suitable for full construction. And in those areas, instead of being able to use that concrete road as our base, we'll need to take that out so that we get a good road surface going forward. And then the final piece of that project, this project, will be the preliminary design report where the engineers will evaluate the survey data, the geotech information that we're going to get from Braun and some other factors. And they will write a pre-design report that will provide us, it will answer some of those unknown questions that we have and also give us good construction and design costs going forward. And that will be the basis for the next phase, which will be the full design of a segment of road. You know, right now, we're anticipating that the first phase would be from Eisenhower to Idaho, but depending on the results of this pre-design report, we may have to shorten that up because of construction costs or possibly be able to lengthen it based on those same construction costs. So, we felt like this was a positive move. The information that, you know, the survey information and the information that Braun is going to collect, all of those services would need to be provided if we were going forward with full design anyway, so it's not dollars that we're going to have to spend twice. The only extra dollars would be on the pre-design, and that, you know, in my mind, helps us, helps the next phase of the project get off on the right foot and gives us a firm understanding of what we're dealing with moving forward. This approach, I think, is appropriate. You know, money is tight, and having as many answers as we can upfront, I think, will serve us well going forward. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
And Darren is here from Bartlett &amp; West. I think as much money as this is, I think it'd probably be a good use of time if you want to come on and just, I'd explain to us what goes into this and why it's so, why design work, professional work is so expensive.
Sure. Darren Ammon with Bartlett &amp; West. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Glad to be here and thanks really to David and most of our internal team, surveyors and other engineers who have worked together to compile this proposal because it has taken a lot of time and a lot of effort really to come up with this detail. I think the short version specifically with this is I really like this approach, quite honestly, as David explained very well, all the detail that we've got in there. We've got pre-designed services, so we're not going right into, let's get a design contract for the whole thing, and then we'll figure out the issues later. We're starting upfront, getting the background data. Survey is needed for the entire corridor, one way or the other, to understand what's out there. Braun Intertech, and by the way, if you're not familiar with Braun, they are actually a newer investor in the Franklin County Development Council, so they are invested in the county. So, we like to bring partners that we work with that are familiar with the area to help provide services. They will be providing the ground penetrating radar, which takes a look at the pavement surfaces. Again, some of that stuff below the ground, you can't see, you don't know what's there. I found that out actually with the project we were doing earlier when we were going to do a mill and overlay, and they said, "Yeah, there's four inches asphalt there." Well, come to find out, when they started grinding it, there was about an inch and a half of asphalt, and we had to go back. The whole project got shut down until you figured it out. So, getting that data and having that in hand early will be very helpful. And then some of the pre-designed engineering thinking about when we do have the survey, the information from the ground penetrating radar, and then doing some of the specific borings, about one every mile, I think, is what has been talked about. We can gather all that information, sit around the table, and discuss, well, here's what we're going to need to do for a full design, figure out the phasing maybe of what would need to be taking place in that, and then come up with a good solution so we can compile a tight scope for Franklin County moving forward. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think David probably has more of the technical detail because he's had some of the direct discussions with the surveyors and engineers more so than me per se, but I'd be happy to answer any questions and help with that.
All information that's going to be pertinent and useful?
Absolutely.
Next year or 20 years, 30 years, whenever that particular portion of road gets dealt with, so it...
That was my question. So, everything that you're doing, if nothing gets done in 20 years, is any of it going to have to be redone at that point?
Well, I hope it doesn't take 20 years to actually...
Well, we hope it doesn't take 20 years, absolutely.
Because things would, I mean, from a survey standpoint, people could plant trees, you could run new utility lines and different things like that could be modified and changed, and we wouldn't know it if it's 20 years from now. But, I mean, in the next couple of years per se, I mean, something can change tomorrow. But generally speaking, the ground penetrating radar, the survey information, the right-of-way, we would know if that's going to be changing in discussions. That's not going to be changing.
Well, whether it's the concrete, can it change?
It can change every day.
Yeah.
Every day it can. I mean, it's not going to get better. Every day, it's only going to deteriorate further. But the short answer again is this information is going to be useful. I would say it does have a shelf life, again, 20 years. I think I'd want to verify information and maybe go back and do some things, but the next couple of years or so, even beyond that, it's going to be valuable. It's not, no, you're not going to have to resurvey. It'd be more of a verification check of information, yeah.
We get an idea, you know, what we want to build and where we want to build it, and it doesn't happen right away. Is there a way we can, I mean, obviously start right away, but we can preserve that area so that, like you say, utilities don't get placed there and then turn around and we need to move them pretty much right away?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's what this is about, that pre-design phase, understanding the background data, coming up with a plan of what makes sense and the timing of that. Because again, the next phase would be a full engineering contract to actually design whatever it is that's determined based on the information. But very, very, always think highly about, you know, measure twice, cut once type of philosophy, and this takes care of that for right now, so.
When you do these surveys, do you consider modifying the road at all far as safety concerns, far as the curves and that sort of thing when you do this pre-design?
That'll all be part of the pre-design analysis and review. The survey data is just going to be picking up how it exists. I mean, it's basically a snapshot of what's out there. I mean, that's what we got to have. It'll be in electronic format. David mentioned it's done with LiDAR, so it's not, I'll call it the older school style where you're out there with a couple of people on a rod on the road, taking multiple weeks to get it done. This is a scanning device, either mobile or static. I don't remember actually if they talk about mobile.
Yeah, it's got to be mobile.
That's what I thought. They were going to do mobile, so it actually scans while you drive, so it's safer for our employees to be out there doing that. And it takes millions and billions of points. Everything, every corner like of this, if we scan this room, would have a point. It would have an elevation and have a data cloud, and we'd be able to build a model that's very accurate with that information. So, to answer your question, Mr. Dunn, it's just the existing information that we're gathering with the survey, the pre-design analysis, once we have all that in-house between the survey and the ground penetrating radar and the borings, that will help us get to that, that evaluation.
So, to further answer your question there, through this process where we've been communicating with Bartlett &amp; West, one of the, a couple of the things that we have discussed, we have some funny intersections that tie into Old 50. We're aware of that, and this is, those, how we deal with those will be part of the preliminary design considerations. Also, another factor that will potentially affect right-of-way acquisition and the road profile and construction costs is if we add a bike lane to Old 50. That has been something that's, you know, going to be considered, something that you all have a say in before we get to the design components. And so, we will analyze all of that, Bartlett &amp; West will, and provide us feedback on that. So, right now, we think that barring any funny intersection issues that we have to resolve, the feeling is, sitting here today with what we know, we think we can possibly do this within the existing right-of-way. However, if we add a bike lane, that road profile may require the acquisition of some additional right-of-way. Intersections, how we handle those intersections, if we change the alignment to those, may require additional right-of-way. So, we are not spending a great deal of time today going out and surveying for, you know, those right-of-way and establishing those because we don't want to spend dollars today and then find out that, hey, we've got to do more work later on. So, we're trying to spend these dollars at the appropriate time on the appropriate items, and that's what this contract is all about. So, there's a lot of considerations that will be made and put into this preliminary design report as a part of this process and...
Fair to say how it will be is tomorrow, how it is today, and that's what's in front of us, so. All right. So, this phase is for the pre-design report from Bartlett &amp; West, and that amount is That's for the proposal that's in front of us. Any more discussion?
Just have one other question. From fence row to fence row, is this going to be considered for the utilities to Homewood? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, because we do feel like there is some, you know, they're going to have to be out establishing control along this whole 16 miles, but we felt like there was benefit in collecting, you know, because our anticipation is that we're going to be able to move forward with full design on some portion, and it makes sense that the Eisenhower to Idaho, which is our most heavily traveled section of road, be the first portion to be designed. Our anticipation is, is that we're going to get lucky with finding financing and those sorts of things to be able to move forward with that, and having those utilities located in that section specifically will help us, again, firm up our design and construction costs for that area.
Yeah. It's safe to say that we deal with now plenty of roads, especially that we wish a little more pre-planning and thought had gone into before it was constructed, but we're stuck with what we have. So it's also about not creating that situation for the next generation or group of people who have to sit here, so.
And I think it bears repeating that, you know, we're spending $280,000, which is a large amount of money, no doubt. But we're not spending, we're not going to spend those dollars twice. Those dollars that we spend today, we'll be able to, you know, we'll build into the design whenever we get ready to move forward with that. So there's going to be additional survey work. There'll be a lot more engineering and those sorts of things when we get to that point, but we're not going to have to redo what we're doing today.
So basically, that'll give us PSI basically on all the, was CTV? We're calling it concrete, but most of it's probably CTV by now, you know?
We're going to find out. That's what this is about.
Right. Okay. Is there a timeframe for doing this?
The GP, the Braun plans to be here week after next, is what I was told yesterday. And so they're going to jump right on it. I will tell you that it's going, you know, once they do the mobile LiDAR and even the GPR, it takes time to extract the information from that. Those are the two most time-consuming items. And so, you know, once they get started on that, they're going to, the volume of information that they're collecting with this information is vast. And so it takes a while to extract that. But they're going to get started here within two weeks is kind of what they've got us penciled in for right now. And they're, everybody's anxious to get started.
Anyone else? Are they okay with this? Their motion to move forward with the contract from Bartlett, from Bartlett and West that's in front of us?
I'll make the motion approve.
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Baymire?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Look forward to working with you.
All right, thank you. Third item is to consider approval awarding tire bid. Looks like one, two, and five are to Heartland Tire and bids number three and four to Pomp's Tire Service. Those are in front of us. Don't imagine there's questions on tire bids, but would anybody pick up if you do? If not, who would like to make a motion to award tire bids as stated on our attachment here?
I will make a motion to award the tire bids as stated in our agenda.
All right.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Baymire?
Yes. Staff reports. Derek?
Aided that if we're not happy with what is in front of us, we're not going to move forward. You know, you talk about big projects, like we're not going to spend this kind of money for something that doesn't add functionality to the county. I mean, that's the goal here. It's not, you know, purchased window dressing that's going to make screens look nicer or we're looking for true functionality so that we can realize efficiencies and, you know, work more productively. So we're going to be working on that over the next couple of weeks. And again, we'll be back in front of you when we, you know, hopefully we'll have a couple proposals that we can discuss. Janet and I continue to have intermittent conversations with Widow Brian, who was our consultant for the stimulus funds, continue to get requests for ARPA funds. They've slowed down a little bit. Again, we're not in any rush because we have until the end of '24 and we still believe that there are going to be additional stimulus packages that come down. And so we don't want to get money tied up into a certain kind of project only to have another stimulus come that would have been a better use or a more appropriate use. So I will tell you that the first use of those funds may very well involve the Centropolis Sewer District. Clearly, we can use ARPA funds for sewer districts and we're having issues out there. And so just know that's something that may very well come before you in the near future. Last thing, COVID clinics, and I'll segue into Casey's report. Most of the vaccine that we've given in Franklin County has been Moderna and I know that they are in the process of getting FDA and CDC approvals for additional doses. We believe that is going to happen this month. And so probably the early part of November, we will be looking at scheduling, you know, large, at least a couple of large clinics again, so that we can give additional Moderna doses to those who are eligible. And we do anticipate our elderly population, those 65 and older, being very interested in that third dose. And so Colt, that's all I have. Would gladly turn it over to Casey.
I just want to clarify because additional doses and booster doses are two different things. So Derek's talking about booster doses. We're already giving additional doses for immunocompromised people. Really, I don't have much more to say about COVID. Our numbers are trending downward, just as is the whole state of Kansas, so that's a great thing for now and we hope that that continues. And we should know more on October 14th about the Moderna boosters. But we are having a Pfizer clinic on October 20th at the hospital for anyone that got Pfizer or wants Pfizer. They can get a first dose, second dose, or a booster dose. That's October 20th. Other than that, unless you have questions on COVID.
Do you have any timeline on the KIDs?
It's, we, not a good timeline, but I do know that they're hoping to have it approved for emergency use in November. So that's the.
I know a pharmacy rep, he said by the middle of the spring, either you'll be vaccinated or you'll have it and will be hopefully through most of it, though. One way or the other, I guess we'll get through it.
Putting on my communications hat for a minute. You guys don't hear much about it because I feel like all of my, everything I do is for other department heads that report to you. But we are doing or looking at completely rebranding at EMS and also the Health Department doing some branding stuff. So eventually or soon, you should see a quote for new signage on their windows like we did at the other end of the annex for Franklin County. They both have their own little icon, is what I would call it. Ours is the courthouse, but EMS has their EMS one, Public Health has a Public Health one, much like the Attorney has Scales of Justice. So we're working on that. And then also I just attended the Kansas Association of Public Information Officers Conference last week and it was very valuable. It was mainly focused on social media, which is the largest medium for getting news out to our constituents. So learned a lot of good things. I would like to get all of our social media managers together to talk through some things and just get everybody on the same page. But overall, it was a great conference, so.
You talk about rebranding. One of the things that I continue to be impressed with is how engaged our employees are in that discussion. We've had discussions with the folks over in ambulance and they are incredibly excited about it. Like, we've given them a say in what it looks like and they just, they continue to be excited. And every time that Casey does an apparel order, we get a lot of orders on that. And so it's just been fun to watch. And I'll tell you, it's something that I personally did not expect to see, but certainly been very pleasantly surprised by how much buy-in we've received. And it seems to really be a morale booster, which is fantastic right now, so.
We did have the wellness fair. I don't know if any of you were able to make it. I didn't get to make it because I was at that conference, but it went fantastic from what I'm hearing. And Ian's got her cup. I know that employees that came got their some Franklin County stuff and they, HR got a lot of compliments on that stuff, so.
I've got an idea, and I'm just going to jump in on the staff side and Derek may shoot me for bringing this up. But the employee, I get nervous. As far as employee involvement and all that, our guys are out, our people are out, like the sheriffs out 24/7, our road graders are out. I walk around this building, the administration suite, there's a lot of blank walls. Our new hallways here, they're blank. Everybody's snapping pictures. They see a pretty sunrise, perfectly planted corn, just life in Franklin County. I'd be willing to, you know, purchase the rights for the county, like safely set up a deal, $50 a picture, once a month, you and I, maybe another person, get together. Employees can submit them, $50 prize. And then, like I said, I'd be willing to put in $500, first 10 people. And then the county chooses to print them, put them in the hallways. I think it'd be neat to, it'd be a neat benefit for our employees, but it'd be neat to show what we're doing, you know, just life in Franklin County, what the county is, something to that. I think it'd be neat. I'd be happy to throw some money and get it started. And if it's something we will find value in, I want to continue, but.
I think that's awesome.
Nobody's formally objected to it.
Doesn't City Hall have some of those?
Yeah, they did something like that with the public. I was thinking it'd just be neat for our employees.
Yep. We can send an email out and get employees started on it, yeah.
But if there's no objection to it, maybe we could all work together on that and get something, but.
I know one of our employees that don't have a uniform per se, use our t-shirts as their uniform.
Yes, they do.
You know, so you see them a lot around just with them working.
And I am working on a fall apparel order. We are running into, and we ran into this last year in the spring too. He's just having a lot of trouble sourcing items, just like everything else. It's hard. So we may put some stuff out for order and he may not be able to get it. It's just kind of a guessing game. So, but that'll be going out soon for employees. Yep.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah.
I'll put that makes sense, just kind of, but, all right.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks. Sheriff?
This, last Friday, we had a, one of our corrections corporals, Matty Garner, graduated from KLETC. So she is a fully certified law enforcement officer now. If you'll remember, she is one of the groups that we hired directly from a high school to go and start working in the jail. And that program that we have there, that law enforcement pathway that they have at HS has been a big benefit for us. We, and we get to work with them as about as far as our advisory board. And it's a good partnership that we have and it's just one way that is helping, helping us keep Franklin County talent here in Franklin County. So we appreciate the partnership that we have, have there. This weekend is National Faith in Blue Weekend. And so on Saturday, you may see some of our county t-shirts running around in the 700 and 800 blocks of Locust here in Ottawa. That was the location where I had talked to the board about the dump fees for the roll-off dump thing that we'll have down there. But we will have people down there working, helping do some neighborhood projects down there. That'll be Saturday. And then on Sunday is our event where we'll have almost like a picnic fair type thing. We'll have vehicles and displays and stuff out there and we'll be feeding people. But there'll also be, there'll be a panel discussion and we'll have a moderator to, so that myself and the police chiefs can answer questions from the public and just kind of continue the dialogue, the public dialogue that we have. And what we experience here in Franklin County is not what you see on the news in Minneapolis and Portland and places like that. We have a good relationship with our, with the community here and we just want to continue making sure that that, that relationship continues in a positive manner for both sides, for everybody there. The last thing I have is that we had worked with, I worked with Casey and then Brenda and Aaron at the Health Department to get some of our staff approved, I guess, or certified, whatever, to administer the test, some of the rapid tests for our staff. So if we have exposures or things like that, we can do that. I do have some employees that are out with COVID right now, but two of those employees we caught during our testing protocols that we do. So I believe it's working the way that we designed it, that we were hoping that things would work. And so we still have all of our things in place, but I just wanted to compliment the Health Department, Casey, with what they've done with us. I try to keep them in the loop and then find out what it is that I, I need to be doing different if there is anything. And so, so that we're all on the same page and we're, we're able to keep our workforce where it is so that we can self-provide the service to the, to the public that way. So just wanted to comment on that. And if you guys have any questions for me, I'll be happy to.
I have a question, but you shared everything, but the time and the place. And the time is four o'clock and the place is Legacy Square.
Sorry, four o'clock at Legacy Square and it'll be done by six so that everybody will be home in time for chief kickoff, so.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Paul?
Morning, mister.
First, I just want to say thank you for entering into a contract with Bartlett and West and with Braun Intertech. As was mentioned, they're both FCDC partners and invest in our economic development as members. But also, both of those companies have done a lot of work for me for free as we try to do different things for different bids and RFPs and that type of thing. So just want you to know that they're great partners and are very invested in Franklin County. So thank you for working with them. Want to share a couple of events. One, last week, and can't get into great detail, but, you know, a lot of people say, what's happening? Nothing's happening at Proximity Park, that type of thing. And want you all in the public to know that we had another site visit just last week. We had a company fly into the Ottawa Airport in their corporate jet and we met with them for, for a couple of hours, had a great reception. We had the mascots from OU and the high school out there. We had the jazz ensemble from Ottawa University and a lot of people participated in greeting them as they got off the plane. It was pretty cool. And they left very impressed with, with what we did. People also need to understand, there's a ton of work that goes into that. This was our third round with this particular company. They send out a request for information, thanks to our partners at Commerce, and we put together a package and sent that to, to them. Then we had a virtual site visit a couple of weeks later and a lot of, a lot of prep work for that. And then we had a physical visit. So now we're waiting to hear if we can make it to the fourth round, which would be a bigger physical visit with a bigger team. But want everybody to know, there's a lot of work, great representation from, from the county. Derek was a great partner on that. City of Ottawa did some great things. Representative Finch was there, Mayor Kayler, and of course, the city development and the city manager. and of course, the city development and the city manager. But we also had Bartlett and West was on site to help us out. Kansas Gas came down, was on site. So, just great team effort. And want people to know, a lot of good work's being done as we promote Proximity Park. We finished second twice. I hope this time, we don't finish second, but we'll see how it goes. We did beat out three other cities in the state of Kansas. So, we're the only place in Kansas they were looking at. So, I'm proud of that. But want you all in the public to know that a lot is happening. It's just gonna be a matter of time we'll get something. But I just want people to know, a lot of people are working on it. And Dawn will probably talk about it, but I think we had a great meeting last week, thanks to Dawn, with some area economic development folks. And just trying to get the six counties to kind of communicate and work together and see if there's opportunities that as a group, we can maybe move the ball a little further in whatever instance that might be. But appreciate Dawn's support and leadership on that. And I got a lot of good feedback on that meeting and hope to do many more. And then, lastly, I'll be in Wichita tomorrow. There's a Kansas Economic Outlook Conference that they put on annually. And it kind of helps us get a sense of what the state's looking at from an economic outlook for the state of Kansas. So, I'll be happy to get some good information and bring that back to you. But that's all I've got, unless you've got any questions?
Paul, I've got a question. How much, how much notice did you have in advance of those folks making an actual site visit?
They notified us on Thursday. They were coming on Monday.
Wow.
So, we had to juggle a lot of balls, a lot of, pretty fast.
So, in that amount of time, you got folks from this organization, the county, the city, the school district, Kansas Gas, Bartlett and West, multiple departments at the state. You had folks from OU come in. You pulled all of that together in like two business days.
Yeah.
You know, I've sung Paul Bean's praises numerous times. You know how I feel about him, but Paul works his tail off. Like, it's one thing to manage an organization full of people that report to you. I mean, we have elected officials that don't, but by and large, I mean, there is a, you know, a chain of command here. But Paul's pulling groups of folks together, none of which report to him. And he's able to do that so well. And it's because of the legwork that he puts in. It's because of the relationships that he's built. And so, Paul, I think you've done an exceptional job. And we haven't landed one yet, but it is not because we are not incredibly well-prepared as a community. And so, thank you for that.
Alright, appreciate that.
If you would have taken the standard one day to complain about how hard it's gonna be, then you would only have one day to do it. But you don't do that, so.
Well, we have great partner. I appreciate that. But it's a great community, great partnerships. And it really is a team effort. And, you know, that's what's nice about my job is everybody's trying to get to the same outcome. And there may be different opinions and strategies, but at the end of the day, when something pops up, everybody jumps in and it's just, it's just awesome. So, I can't thank everybody enough. It's just, it's a lot of fun. But it was a great day. It was really cool when they got off the plane. They're like, wow. And then, we provided them some barbecue from the local restaurant. And I stayed. People had other things to do, but I stayed. And we gave them time to kind of debrief and while they had lunch. And then, when they left, they were laughing. What, no band when we leave? So, they had a great time. The feedback was very, very positive. So, but thank you for those nice comments, Derek.
And I would echo your sentiment. And I hope Dawn talks about it. But that was a great meeting we had there at Primetime Grill with the representatives from those other six communities. Spent a lot of time in meetings and that I'm not sure is time well-spent. But that one was, I feel like a lot of great information was passed around. And I hope that's something that we can continue to do every quarter or a couple times a year, so.
I agree. Any questions?
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Okay, so, a couple of weeks ago, Jeff Welton and I attended a, oh, it's a Mink Conference. It's for state officials and public works directors and those sorts of things from Missouri, Iowa, and Nebraska and Kansas. They meet up in St. Joe every year that we can. There's, you know, it's less than 100 people, but the programming and the information is always really good, along with the networking. One of the speakers really stood out to us this year. They talked about, this person was a bridge specialist in the Iowa DOT. And his job, all he does during the summer months is epoxy injections on bridge decks, where they have, you know, you've heard me talk about delamination in our bridge decks. Jackson Road, for example, is one that, you know, we, the surface of the road is terrible, but what's underneath is even worse. So, you have these voids in the concrete deck. And so, with this epoxy injection, they are going in and they have a process where they drill the holes, insert the epoxy injection to fill those voids. And they're, this is a program, they've got two or three crews that do this around the state for them. And they are gaining anywhere from five to 10 years of life on the end of their bridges by doing this process. Both Jeff and I had the same thought that, you know, this may be something that we might be able to do. And so, last week, I got a few of my staff members together, some of the guys that we rely on for their construction experience and those sorts of things. And we viewed a video that the Iowa DOT had prepared, kind of detailing the whole process for this epoxy injection service that they do. And so, we watched it as a group. And the purpose of that was to really get the input from the staff to see if they agreed that maybe this might be something that we could possibly do in-house. And they were all for it. They felt that we could do that, that we had the labor and some of the equipment already, and thought that this was something that we could do. So, we, I've got, you know, several questions that came up during that discussion that I'll need to follow through on, try to get answers from those folks with the Iowa DOT. And I need to reach out to our KDOT partners to talk with them about some of this. But it might be something that later this year, or first of next year, might come before you in a study session to talk about this service, to see if it is something that we would want to entertain. It's, certainly, we have the need. We've got, I've got three other bridge decks besides Jackson Road that I know need this type of, that have these same types of issues. And I'm certain that we have a whole bunch more out there that could utilize this sort of process. So, something to look forward to down the road, probably after the first of the year is when it would be appropriate to bring this to you. This is a process that works best in the summer months. So, it's a construction season type of application. So, we've got time. But I wanted to bring that to you, kind of while it was fresh in my mind. So, kind of exciting. Another thing, on Friday, had a, attended a field check site visit with KDOT on the Osborne Terrace Bridge Project. The plans on that are coming along just fine. We do have a, an issue with that bridge being on the historical register. We notified the engineers early on that we felt like that was. Somebody with the historical, what are they called, historical preservation folks with the state of Kansas, you know, they're notified of all bridge projects and that sort of thing. And so, they have weighed in. And so, there is a, there are options for us to move forward. None of them are great. One of the options is to build a, to leave that historical bridge in place and build a new bridge right beside it. That's problematic because not, you know, 200 feet down the downstream is a railroad bridge, followed by a low-water crossing, less than, you know, 150 feet or so from that bridge. So, you would basically have four bridge structures right in a row, which is never good on a creek system like that. So, that's one option. Another option is to find another bridge with a similar design and name that one on the historical register and take this one off. The problem is, we don't have, we have another steel beam structure, but it's not of the same design. So, we're not sure that they will accept that in trade. And so, we've got, we're gonna work through that issue. The third option is to relocate that bridge, put it someplace else. And so, there, you know, we're brainstorming ideas on that. All of this adds expense and time to our project. We have already talked with KDOT that it's possible that, working through these issues, we may not be ready for construction in October of 2022. Fortunately, and KDOT has changed their requirements, but if we don't make this in the 2022 construction season, we'll get on for the 2023. That's not gonna be an issue. But there will be additional costs in all of these concerns. So, we are, the engineers are gonna be working on this primarily to try to work through the issues with the historical folks. We have some peculiar site issues in addition to the fact that there's so many bridges, so many bridges right in a row. So, we're hoping that some of those things sway them to allow us to move forward with what we're wanting to do today. I don't know if there will be any action or any letters or anything like that, that would be beneficial coming from myself, or Derek, or the commission. Those things may come up down the road, but we're not there yet. I just bring that up to alert you that, you know, although the design is just fine, we do have other hurdles on that particular project that we're gonna have to cross before we're able to get to the end on that.
What bridge was that?
It is on Osborne Terrace, just west of Eisenhower, right next to the.
I don't know where it's at.
Yeah, it's kind of a neat little bridge and whatnot. So, you know, it needs to be replaced. It's a fracture-critical bridge. So, there's lots of things telling us to replace it. It's just the historical preservation, it might be a bit of a hang-up for us. So, we'll work through those, that issue in the coming days and weeks and months.
There's quite a bit of traffic on there, isn't there?
Yes, it is. There's a lot of traffic. And there's a lot of, a lot of big trees. There's drainage right along the road that kind of feeds into that. There's a lot of circumstances that make that a difficult site. A lot of really large, mature trees right along the right-of-way that are problematic also. Especially when you have to, you know, you can't just take those out. You have to replant, you know, a certain number for every tree you take out. And so, there's, there are lots of issues with that. You know, it would be best, cheapest, to leave the location the same and remove the bridge completely. But again, I'll bring more information back to you as we, as we work through those things. And then, finally, we have a walkthrough on the Virginia Road Project North of Lane tomorrow afternoon. And so, whenever we get to those, it's more like a punch list. We're gonna meet with KDOT representatives and the engineers to walk the site, review the plans and any items that need to be buttoned up before the project completes. Those will be noted. And the contractor will have a week or so to finish that up. But I, it's such a small project, I really expect that they're cleaned up and out of there probably by next week or the week after at the very latest. So, awfully close on those things. Oh, and then, finally, we do have a, I think it was last week, we approved putting out bids for financing for the motor graders, just like all of our other bid openings that will be held in the office at 11:00 a.m. on Monday morning, this coming Monday. So, we'll open those and read them outline, which is our standard procedure on all that stuff, so.
Commissioners, just want to let you know that the last two days, we've had our election vendor on site and they've been, they've unboxed all of our new election equipment. It's all waiting for tomorrow. We have an all-day training session tomorrow for staff in the courthouse for the new election equipment. So, we'll have different trainers on site tomorrow for that. And then, we'll be looking forward to getting our election staff trained up next, starting next week. So, we have several days that we do that with our elections staff for the poll locations, so that they can choose which works best for them. So, we'll have three dates for that. So, that's all coming right along. We have our test ballots ordered and we'll be looking forward to doing our public test of that. So, if anyone wants to come and see the new equipment. And I'm hoping to have the Express Votes, which is the touchscreen model, set up in our office for early voting. So, if anyone wants to try out the new touchscreen, it's very different than the old touchscreens. And it's very fast and it's really nice. So, I will have those set up, so.
We had a question come up at our Southeast Kansas meeting. Can a elected official work as an election worker?
I would double-check. If anyone is interested in working as an election official, definitely get in contact with me. And then, we will check out the legalities of that. There are some new changes in the law, and I would definitely want to reread that. It's always been if you are on the ballot that you cannot work in the precinct that you are on the ballot in. And you're, I'm supposed to have you work at the closest location to your voting location, if at all possible. So, there's a lot of considerations that go into staffing each location to try to find people who belong to that location, who would regularly vote at that location. But as you guys know, when we're trying to hire 100 people to staff all the polling locations for the day, it's difficult to say, find three people in Appinuse Township that could staff that location in the past. That's why we've moved it to Pomona, because it can handle the volume. And we have a bigger pool of people that we can draw from. Then, we could get people from Pomona, we could get people from Appinuse to staff that location, so that we have adequate staff there. Because we're required by law to have at least three people on site at all times to run the location.
Is the registration to run for those offices that closed now?
No, it's not. Let me tell you what the date is. The last day to register to vote is next Tuesday, the 12th.
But the date to apply for running for those offices, has it passed now?
Oh, yes. That is always June 1st at noon is always the deadline to file for office. So, the candidate lists are set. And I know a lot of people have said that they haven't been able to see them, but they are on the County Clerk and Elections webpage. And they're right at the very top. On the left-hand side, it says the 2021 candidates. And they're separated by cities and then by school districts. So, whatever particular candidates that you would like to look at, they're right out there for you to see. And then, we will be having a candidate forum coming up that the Chamber of Commerce is putting on. And I think.
I'm looking it up, yeah.
I think that is the.
Is it the high school one? It'll be?
October 14th, at 6:00 at the high school.
Yep. Yes. Yeah, it is at the high school this year in their Performing Arts Center. Yep.
Casey is in a couple of weeks, is it not? Are you, are you quarterbacking who's going? Because we may need to discuss, because that's a Monday through Wednesday, right?
Yes.
On a week that we have a study session. And so, if you and I are gone and Casey is gone, I don't know how many commissioners are gonna be in attendance. But if we're not gonna have a quorum, or if we need to talk about canceling the meeting, we might do that a couple of weeks in advance.
So, it's the 18th through the 20th, which is a Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Commissioner Stottlemyre and Commissioner Dickerson are planning on being there. And Commissioner Dunn is planning on potentially attending some of the sessions during the day, but not staying up there the full-time. And both Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Wayne Meyer have expressed interest in potentially going to some of the sessions too. So, I think there's, the good majority of us sitting in this room are planning to be. So I think there's, the good majority of us sitting in this room are planning to be there, including David, Casey, yourself, and I. So I think that pretty much encompasses all of us, and that would be the meetings on the 18th and the 20th potentially would need to be canceled.
Do we want to go ahead and discuss today? Do we want to, so that we can give a couple weeks' notice? Do we want to plan on canceling those two meetings?
I like the better.
Yeah.
All right. Nobody's gonna be here. I mean, not available, I guess, don't mean to say nobody.
Yeah.
And not just the study session, but the regular meeting?
Right.
About both of them?
Yep.
We'll all be working in our respective capacities, just not in this room.
Yeah, not in this room.
Okay. Okay, then we'll go ahead and get a, plan on getting those canceled and get the notice out, so. All right, thanks.
Commissioners, let's start on this end. Roy?
All right, Ian.
At a food policy council meeting on Monday, we're still meeting by Zoom. The Connect Parantry still, and that's the one that goes out to the different communities. It goes out every two weeks. There's still, I mean, that out. Couple of different entities are working on some Thanksgiving, but being able to put out some Thanksgiving food for like the whole meal. So if you're interested in something like that, the high school especially has that list that's out. I had gone to a meeting of the Prairie Paws Finance Committee that, out of all of our community partners, that's probably one that really got hit hard by COVID for a lot of different reasons. More people are having to give up their pets. And at the same time, they're not being able to have most of their fundraising efforts in the same capacity as they've had before. And so they are, they continue to struggle, and yet they are working on, you know, trying to make good decisions as far as the money they have and what, how they can still meet with the community. So that might be one that we need to consider, some of our money. The other two things are for the city of Ottawa. They had their Second Coast auction this week. They sold nine more of the lots. I think there were five, four different bidders. So each of them either bid on two of them or three of them. I think it's just the size, a lot of them are less than 6,000 square feet, so they're pretty small. So it'll be interesting. So they have a majority of them still left, probably over 30 or close to 30. And so it'll be interesting to see where they go to next, to see how they can continue to move forward, to get those out so that those can get developed. And the last thing is, at this evening's meeting, it will be Blake Jorgensen's last meeting, after many, many years serving his community as a city commissioner. And that's it.
Yeah, we had a meeting yesterday, which is something I've been thinking about for a long time. And finally, we had gotten somebody on board with Paul and to put it all together. My idea, yeah, that Paul did all the, did all the labor. And gathered the people, people he knows and his contacts. And I appreciate Derek showing up, and Casey showed up. Casey's gonna do a little story, and hopefully we can put it in the other county's local paper, so they know what we're trying to do on our end. Primetime did a very good job of that. First time I'd ever used their meeting room. Very nice setup out there. And Lake Region provided the meal, had a real good meal. And the conversation started off real slow, but I think as soon as I told them that the Lake Region's part of it, we're here to not tell you how to do anything, we're here to see how you want to do it, you know? And as soon as that comment was made, man, they fed a lot of information, a lot of stuff going on in the other counties we didn't have a clue. In fact, one big deal going on in another county, we had no idea in the world was going on, which Derek offered to, being just kind of similar to what we done out here, to even, if they needed a few insights of what we ran into and problems, that he'd be willing to furnish them some information, not do the job, but at least point them in the right direction. And I think that's what all of them was. I think it turned out, they thought it turned out good for them to be there. It was worth their time and effort and trouble. And we discussed maybe about three months from now to have another one and do it, move it to another county. Take it, and Anderson County Director jumped forward and said she'd line it up and set up a place for it to be. And so, you know, I think they was all excited about doing something and moving forward. And, and we're working with some other entities. Not saying we'll use them, but Project 17 is an idea we talked about. They just come out with the information that Derek put out, that they're kind of reorganizing and doing it a different way, and want to help chambers. So the way I look at chambers is a big part of economic development, so. I'll just move away from that one. And like I said, appreciate Casey's help on that also. I went to, we had a big deal at Wellsville the other night, and thank Casey again. She put together all the gift bags to give away. I had a trunk pulling, pulling.
Amy put the phone together.
And she told me before we left, that before we went out to do another deal, said, can you come back after lunch? I don't know if the cookies are ready or not. What are you talking about, cookies? But she actually had some real nice cookies made up, and they got the Franklin County logo on the cookies that we give away with each stack of, of the tumblers, which I let the event center know, they was the first company, first business to get one of those tumblers, and I think they all were really impressed with them. And I kind of tried to, tried to figure it up a little bit. I think it added up to about 100 new jobs. And that saves a lot for a small town or Franklin County. They added about 100, and that's not just, a couple of them are revamped of the business, but, but I figured, right, I tried to add it up. And there's around 100 new jobs they added up there in that community, so. And there, and there's a couple more new businesses that didn't, because they weren't right chamber members yet. But I kind of figured that's another 20 jobs in those other two businesses that aren't chambers yet. Yeah, so I thought that was a good, good thing also. I went to the Wellsville meeting on the last meeting, and the main thing on their topic, they're planning on, they're putting in a new, something they've been working on for years, putting in a new police station. And they have bought property back behind, if you know where Daughter General store there on 33. They have bought property back behind there and bought that big metal building that's behind there. I don't know the whole connection yet. I don't think they have. They wanted to get a purchase before doing the design, make sure they got it. But I think that's their plan, that they're gonna be moving the police department out there and be right there on, close right on the highway and, and really visible to the traffic and everybody where they're kind of hidden down there where they're at now. You know, nobody, unless you live there, you don't even know where they're at. And this will, I think, could be a big improvement for them. And they're doing the new bypass there and redoing that bridge, so there's a lot going on right there. And they gave a big nice tour of the steel plant while we was up there. That was pretty interesting how they expanded. They had 28 employees there, and it's pretty well computerized, hard to believe. Almost everything, they just punch it in and the computer takes over and feeds all the stuff through there. They have one forklift there, they said could pick up a boxcar load of steel. And it, it was big. So that's all I got.
Is the police department where our ambulance is, or is the fire department where our ambulance is, in Wellsville?
Our ambulance is located in the city's building, which is with the fire department. But it's the city's building. The police chief is the whole different building, whole different thing.
Well, I believe that brings us to the end. We need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
A second?
Okay.
All right, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.